Evening, everybody. We're gonna call to order the meeting of the City of Castle Hills Zoning Commission. We are meeting on February 6, 2018, in the Castle Hills City Hall, City Council Chambers, at 209 Lemonwood Drive in Castle Hills, Texas. It is 7:00 PM. Seated tonight for this hearing are Commissioners Fentress, Baker, Gray, Flynn, and Chairman Isbrand. Item number two, consider approval of the September 5, 2017 zoning commission minutes. Members, do you have any additions, deletions, edits, comments? Hearing none will accept a motion on that? Mr. Gray makes a motion to approve. A second, please. Ms. Baker, all in favor. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Item number three is consider and make a recommendation to the City Council on the application from Iglesia Cristiana Emanuel Church for a special use permit at 210 Lemonwood Drive. Legal description CB 5778A, Block 14, Lot 5, and 212 Lemonwood Drive. Legal description CB 577A, Block 14, Lot 22, Castle Hills subdivision, to utilize the property as a church as provided in Section 50-61B, municipally owned businesses and structures. In addition, the following uses are allowed of a special use permit. An SUP is approved by the City Council in accordance with this chapter. Number five, churches, so long as the front, the lot frontage and all ingress and egress is from a street within a minimum sixty-foot wide public right-of-way that meets all of the following conditions: A, minimum of two lanes at least fifteen feet wide each, and paved with asphalt, concrete, or municipally approved surface; B, designed and used as a thorough street, a thorough street, a through street, pardon me, a through street where traffic can enter and leave the community; and C, the predominant use of properties with the front yard of the lot on the street is other than single-family residential. Ms. Gonzalez, have all the requirements been met for the filing of application and public notification on this?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. In that case, then, we will take up this matter and as applicant or their representative here this evening to address the zoning commission on this matter. If you'd please come forward, identify yourself, and present your statements to us. Thank you.
My name is Peter Matutis. I'm here representing Iglesia Cristiana Emanuel. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name again is Peter Matutis. I am blessed and honored to address you on behalf of my church, Iglesia Cristiana Emanuel. We come here before the zoning commission of Castle Hills, as well as its citizens, to present you with our desire to purchase a property that is located at 210 and 212 Lemonwood, as our future place for congregation. We consider it a privilege to be part of this wonderful community, and would like to be not just residents, but part of a beautiful family. I was born in Havana, Cuba, and my family migrated to San Antonio in 1968 when I was four years old. Both of my parents worked, as most immigrants do, trying to make their, a new start in a new country. Their hard work paid off when, seven years later, my father was able to start his own business, and my mother eventually graduated with a master's degree from Mary Lady of the Lake University, and became the Director of Social Services for the Barrett County Jail, where she worked for twenty-five years. I was raised in San Antonio, so I'm very fond of and familiar with the city of Castle Hills, especially since I was a graduate from the class of 1982 from Robert E. Lee High School. I'm now running the business my father started in 1976, and we're blessed with many years of success. I met my wife in church, and we have two beautiful boys. I thank God and the church for all my blessings. The first settlers saw the churches as a central institution within the American lifestyle because of moral foundation of self-restraint and community awareness that was provided by religion. It was believed that the American experiment, without the moral training churches provided its members, would not be successful. Throughout encouraging virtue, the church has contributed to the success of America. Research has proven that churches provide economic and social benefits, both directly and indirectly, to its community through volunteering, education, and civic skills training. The church has a divine organization, is a divine organization, whose purpose is in line with God's plans for the people. The church was created to continue the ministry of Jesus Christ on earth. The Holy Spirit was sent to the believers to aid the spreading of the news of Jesus's life, death, and resurrection. We have been, there have been many times throughout history where the church has succeeded in freeing those in bondage, feeding those that were hungry, protecting the abused, and sharing the good news of the forgiveness of God to those who sin. Our church wishes to serve the Hispanic community of Castle Hills and be of positive impact to the whole city. I'm sure that I'm not the only one in this building that feels that this world we live in is in great need of help. We, the church, know we can't make the whole world like it was before this enormous increase in violence, but we can help those around us that need some, someone to talk to, and give the young and the old of our community a safe place to visit and learn the Word of God, and bring some much-needed love to those that need it. We're living in a crazy world today. Churches have helped to reduce the level of deviance. The church brings hope to the hopeless. More and more children are growing up in broken homes, and crime and murder is ever-increasing. When a church is deeply rooted in its community and its membership is operating as public servants, the church will impact the lives of people around it. The basic function of a church is to involve, to be involved in every aspect and facet of the life of the believer. I have seen firsthand how God has blessed those who believe in it and serve in Him, and those who are around Him. Personal or national tragedies such as 9/11 seem to cause a major shift in people's assessment of church. It is in this time when people flock to churches in droves. There is just something about churches that society finds in times of tragedy and hardship. This always fascinates me because the media and general public embrace church, or the idea of church, during times of crisis, but in times of peace and prosperity, their church seems to become irrelevant again. When life is good, most people tend to forget about church and what it is for. Regardless of this double standard, the church keeps people grounded, flushing out the burden of life by providing a bedrock of faith in answers in humanity's deepest needs. The church is a lifeline of any society. Church is a unique place that should instill the change in people's lives. Churches and Christians get involved in the community to better represent Jesus and to make His name known. We have a choice to just be another member of this world that you live in, or you can be a light in a world full of darkness. We have great plans for this location, including state-of-the-art grass creek, which would be a parking lot that helps the environment, and reduces the runoff of our most precious resource, which is water. The building will have state-of-the-art fire suppression system that will be connected to the local fire department. We, of course, would be more than happy to make every, I'm sorry, we would be more than happy to make it... This is a very well-made building, available in case of any emergency or natural disaster, as well as any other needs the City of Castle Hills may need. We would like to be a partner in any appropriate way. We are a small congregation, and because of the location to 410, the impact of traffic, of traffic will be minimal. Approximately forty percent of our congregation lives in this area. Our congregation is made up of many different cultures and professionals, include engineers, doctors, nurses, counselors, teachers, government employees, business owners, as well as a much-needed support personnel that are using our talents to serve God and our community on a daily basis. It is our desire to be a blessing to the city of Castle Hills and to be of positive impact to its citizens. I would like to take this time and thank you for this, allowing me to speak this evening, and may God bless everyone here, and God bless America.
Thank you, sir. Did, was there a presentation on the, the application that you want to present to the zoning commission?
Yes, and I'm sorry, I didn't have the clicker. No, a short clip of the property as it is right now. There are several photos of different areas of inches as far as... And everything's got the, the verbiage on what the pictures are, the elementary school, and different addresses along the way that are surrounding the piece of property. These are just basically all the buildings that are in the immediate area. The City Hall, the Police Department, the Fire Department. The immediate area is going to the property. That's the building itself, the overhead view. Location within Honeysuckle on 410. That would be it.
Are there any additional comments that you would like to make regarding your application, or any additional details you would like to provide us, before I first open it up to the commissioners to ask questions, and then open up a public hearing on this?
At this time, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, so if you just want to stay with us for one minute, and let me ask, Commissioner Members, let me open it up for your initial questions here before we begin the, the public hearing. Are there comments, questions, that you would like to engage in at this point? Ms. Baker?
Can you spell your last name for me? I'm sorry.
M.A.T.U.T.E.S.
Thank you. I really butchered it when I tried to write it.
It's okay. It happens. And when I was in kindergarten, they said, "My two toes." So, that stayed with me over the years.
How many parishioners do you have?
I beg your pardon?
Parishioners, how many do you have?
Approximately a hundred, a hundred and twenty, that's including women and children.
And at the facility that you're at now, how many events do you have throughout the week? How many?
Sunday service, and then there will be a prayer service on Friday nights, and a, a meeting every now and again on Thursday. So, three, two evenings in one day, morning.
Did you have to file with architectural review for any of the things you're doing on your building?
Well, yes.
Okay.
That's all. That still has to be addressed.
So, within, it's, I know it's an ARC issue, but do you have an estimate on the peak-hour trips of the parishioners that will be coming to the Lemonwood property?
The peak hour, as far as the duration of their drive time?
How many people an hour are going to be coming onto your property?
I would say maybe thirty to forty an hour. I mean, that's, it's sparse, because people will carpool, and so one car may have four people, one car may have two people, one car may have five people.
But you have a hundred and twenty parishioners?
Correct. So, a maximum of fifty cars.
And how many, what's the current parking space number that you have at the Lemonwood property?
At this point, I'm not sure what the number is. Do you have a... No, no, no. How many parking spaces are available at this moment?
Parking spaces currently?
I think one of the first things we're gonna address would be a parking lot, because there is a space for it, but it's just...
Right.
It's not ready for parking, so that's where the grass creek would come in.
Right, but you don't know what the current parking space number is at the Lemonwood property?
I would probably say, right now, between twenty and thirty.
And how many?
And that's what's already, that's concrete areas.
And how many spaces are you going to need?
We're gonna, we've planned on adding fifty. That way, we have a clear thoroughfare, which allows the Fire Department to come in if they need to.
And these fifty new spaces are gonna be all along the one side, that you're gonna put in concrete pavers or something?
No, it would, grass creek, what it is basically is a mixture of concrete and dirt that is formatted, so that the grass grows in between the concrete.
Right.
So, when you look at it from afar, it looks like grass, but it holds up to, I think, ten thousand pounds per square foot.
Right.
And this would be on the back-left corner of the property behind the building.
Right.
I could probably, yes, thank you. Right there, in this section. Sorry. Okay, so this area right here is where we would make the grass creek parking. And that has been measured, and it will handle about seventy-five parking spaces.
Do you know if there are any heritage oaks on that area that are going to come out?
In that area, there is not. Yes, we've had that looked at.
Okay.
The only oak trees are up in the front area here, and all this area back here is, well, this is all grass for the most part, and then this is a berm that is almost all dirt with small shrubs on top. They would have to be reduced for the entrance and exit.
So, do you know why there's a berm?
My understanding that Mr. Howard did that to suppress the noise from 410.
It's not for diversion of water?
Not at all, no, ma'am. There is a, there is a very, very well-made runoff in this area here that has, the engineering work has all been filed, where there's no excess of water runoff whatsoever. And then, once again, the grass creek, whatever we do in this area here, will absorb any water, so there's not gonna be a concrete or impermeable surface out there.
Do you know how wide Lemonwood is? I mean...
I believe it's seventy-five feet wide. It's very wide.
And do you know how many houses are immediately surrounding to each next intersection? I mean, we could count it, I guess, on the big map.
I think seven or so, 'cause I, I can't see here, but there's...
Right.
I think three on Honeysuckle here. I have to try to go, I don't have that number, unfortunately.
I guess we could count it off of...
Okay.
Some of this, but I didn't know if you knew right off the top of your head. I don't have any more questions right now. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sir, could you help me understand or differentiate the, what your intended use of 210 Lemonwood is versus 212 Lemonwood? How would these two pieces of property be used?
It's just a matter of, it's one property, but the way it's set up with the city plat, it's two different plats. So, I don't know where the plat line is, but if I'm not mistaken, somewhere around here is where the 210 area is, and everything else is the 212.
Okay.
That's, that's the way the plat was made by the city.
Okay. And then my, my other question is, you indicated that you have a hundred to, approximately a hundred to a hundred and twenty members of your church. How long has it been that size?
Approximately a year, a year and a half. As churches go, we do grow, and we gain and lose members as people move and come in. The church is seven years old now, and it started with twelve and has grown to a hundred and twenty approximately.
And with your acquisition of this property, is it with the intention that the church would continue to grow?
Somewhat, but we understand the property will only hold so much. And it's always the intent of a church is to grow and to spread the Word of God. The building will handle a lot more than what we have. I don't know exactly the numbers if it handles three or four hundred people, if you were to seat them all. And we would be dividing the building and make a much smaller temple, if you will, inside. So, there would be some construction inside with walls being built to make it a smaller area for the service. They'd have offices for the pastor and, and other people from the group, along with other smaller rooms. The land is similar around this wall here, would have the classrooms for the children. So, what is now a big, open area would be reduced in size with walls partitioning the sections.
All right, thank you. Are there, are there questions, Mr. Flynn?
So, am I to understand that there's no, not gonna be any kind of external changes, at all internal changes?
The little external changes maybe would be beautifying the paint, maybe.
Okay.
As far as, there's not gonna be anything architectural changing outside. It could use a fresh coat of paint.
Just cosmetic?
Yes.
Okay.
A little TLC, if you will.
And I just want to clarify, you said there are about thirty parking spots now, and you expect to add maybe fifty?
Well, I'm saying thirty parking spots if you were to use the concrete area that goes all the way around.
Uh-huh.
But before we would start anything, this would be the first plan of attack, if you will.
Okay, 'cause the reason I ask, you're drawing, if you have thirty, excuse me, you expect to add fifty, that's eighty, but your schematic shows a hundred and seventeen spaces.
Well, because that would be, that was the first change in converting all this...
I'm sorry?
That would be if we changed all this grass area to parking, which we would rather not do if we didn't have it.
Okay, okay.
That, that lawn would, we would likely leave that lawn as it is.
Okay.
And that, that would be room for growth if need be.
Okay, and I, I want to confirm, so we're gonna have Sunday church services?
Yes.
And then a Friday night meeting, and a Thursday night meeting. No plans for day, daycares or, or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
And the service, the services at night are very small. They're fifteen, twenty people, maybe.
Okay.
So, those are more centered on, on certain groups. The Sunday service morning would be the, the largest group.
And no changes to the drainage or anything?
At this point, we see no need. The engineering work we've seen shows very, very good drainage.
Okay.
The, the grass creek would absorb any other runoff that we would have in the parking area. That won't affect the drainage whatsoever.
Okay, I have a, I have a technical question. I don't know, Mr. Bren, if I should. Would the, would the grass creek constitute or satisfy the requirement for asphalt, concrete, pavers, or block, or brick?
I'm like you, I'm not an engineer, but it's my understanding it does satisfy the, the pavement requirement.
Okay. Then I have no more questions.
Other questions from the commission? Mr. Fentress?
Question. This is going to create a lot more people coming and going for the property. Has there been plans addressing the waste disposal and how they would manage that?
Yes, we would have a, a, I'm trying to think of the name, but a trash can, if you will, a, a container for whatever trash. The trash, in all honesty, is maybe two or three trash bags, the, the big leaf bags, if you will, what we're having right now. There's not that much trash we use. After services, cookies and coffee, for the most part. And we will have a, a trash container on the premises. I believe the idea is to have a dumpster in this front area here, where the, the truck would be able to come into the, the entrance, receive it, and exit. And the, the property is large enough for the truck to actually go all the way around, 'cause it is wide enough for the fire trucks to drive all the way through there.
Is there any discussion on lighting, as far as exterior lighting?
We have had that discussion. I personally am a firm believer in having some sort of solar power lights. I know I've been playing with them in my own home. We do need to light that area up a little bit better. There's certain things we need to address as far as where lighting is or where electricity is available right now. The building has lighting on the front, so the building can be lit all the way around without any problem. In this area here where the trees are, like I said, there's areas that I've been playing with, with LED lights that are solar-powered, that are not intrusive into the trees, and light very, very well under both motion and dusted on.
That's all I have.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, sir. We'll, we'll come back, I'm sure, to ask you a few more things after the public hearing, but at this point, it's 7:27 PM, and we are going to open the public hearing on this matter. Ms. Gonzalez, do we have a list of sign-ups for this, for the public hearing? Are we just gonna open it up? All right. So, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this matter, if you would kindly come forward, state your name, and if you would be conscious of limiting your comments to the salient points, and if others have repeated or said what you intended to say, you can certainly reaffirm that, but we'd appreciate the sensitivity and respect to everyone's time tonight, but we certainly do want to hear from everybody. Ma'am, please go ahead. If you could tell us your name and...
Yes. I'm Jill Askins. I've owned the house at 98 Honeysuckle for forty-three years. I'm very familiar with what this property has done to our neighborhood. Dee Howard, before he built his elaborate car garage, had a drainage ditch that ran zigzag through this property, and when you look at the adjoining property that faces 410, it has a drainage easement platted into it. But to put the berm around his, his property and put the fence on top of it, he got permission from the City Council to put in the berm. He got the dirt for that by digging an oversized drainage ditch adjoining our properties on Honeysuckle. And consequently, our properties, which sit on about eight feet of loose black topsoil, which has collapsed over the years from the, the drainage that comes off of Honeysuckle. And so, seeing more use coming into the neighborhood is gonna put more stress on the drainage that runs through there, because this was well-engineered by Dee Howard, but it, it's damaged our properties. And my particular concern with this, I have a list of questions that I really think we need to have answered. What denomination is this church? What is the minister's education and affiliation? We've answered, how large is the congregation now? And I believe you tried to get an answer to how you're forecasting for the size in the future. And I believe you tried to get an answer to how you're forecasting for the size in the future. These may seem petty, but I want to say, how many of your current congregation live in Castle Hills? Are you going to be busing people in here like some of the other churches do in our neighborhood? Are the services in Spanish? Are all your church members citizens of the United States or holders of green cards? Do you plan sanctuary operations in this church? Do you plan a daycare or school for children of your members? How many? Will you welcome border patrol agents to your services? My feelings are that this particular operation wants the cachet of saying they're in Castle Hills without adding anything to our community and putting a bigger demand on our limited resources. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there other members of the audience who would like to address this commission this evening? Yes, sir, if you could please state your name.
My name is Louis Jimenez. I reside at two oh four Cromeria, which happens to be four houses down from this property. We turned in a list of eight petitions that are within the two hundred foot of this particular property. And all these individuals are saying, please do not rezone this property. This is a quaint residential neighborhood. We'd like to keep it as such? In doing so, you are compromising my luxury of being able to carry about through the neighborhood as we planned when we purchased the property nineteen years ago. Now, all of a sudden, we are changing things because Castle Hills wants to put another church. The church is not going to generate or any revenue, any tax revenues for the community. We get zero dollars for that. Why are we even considering this? We went down this path once before. We've sent the, the message. We want to keep this neighborhood residential. If you want to put a church, then let them make the changes to where they have egress and regress through the commercial side, through the four-ten side, not through the middle of our neighborhood. You, they, we keep talking about safety issues. You saw what we went through at Wedgewood. This is another prime example of that. The information that is being given to you that fire trucks can go around the building is totally erroneous. It's not true. I put forty years in the fire department with San Antonio. Trucks cannot enter and make a right-hand turn, especially in an emergency when you're going to have multiple trucks. Once you commit, how are you coming out? And the vehicles that are in there, how are they coming out if vehicles are coming in? It's one way in, one way out. I don't have a problem doing what they want to do if it's done correctly. The way it's being planned right now, all it's doing is inconveniencing the residents and changing the quality of life that we are accustomed to. Please vote this thing down. I urge you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. There are others to address the commission this evening?
Good evening. Steve McGuire, one oh three Zornia. We've heard a few objections, but I think, correct me if I'm wrong on this, law says that you cannot deny a church use in a residential community. You can deny secular use and therefore there cannot be things like a daycare center or a school without another special use permit. So this is not similar to the previous applications that have come here. What you can do is demand that there be appropriate safety concerns. I think the concern on fire trucks, I'm not a fire truck expert, but I think our fire chief could answer that question. Our police chief could answer the question if there's appropriate safety there. In terms of egress and, you know, traffic flow, they're coming off of a public road. Sorry, gentlemen, but they are. If, as long as their opening is adequate, coming in, the one-lane road, I don't think is adequate. I think that's going to cause traffic congestion and so I would encourage you to make as a condition, the special use permit has to be at least a two-lane road coming off of Lemonwood into the facility so that traffic does not back up on Lemonwood and Cromeria. As a citizen and taxpayer, am I happy that we're taking another property off the tax rolls? No, but my feelings are irrelevant there. Law already says that you cannot stop this. It seems to me the only issues, as, as I said, that you have to address. Number one, adequate traffic flow in and out, that can be handled. Adequate parking, we have a requirement on that, that can be handled. Appropriate water drainage, they have to be addressing that. And other than that, you know, I don't think you have much choice here.
Thank you, sir. There are other comments from the audience this evening? Anyone else who would like to address the commission?
My name is Margot Peña and I live at two oh six Cromeria. I'm the third house from that property. And I really don't have anything relevant to add other than everyone on my block and everyone that we spoke to within the two hundred feet are against the city issuing this special use permit. And I would appreciate it if you would take our feelings into consideration since we are homeowners here in Castle Hills. I respect the church. I don't care what denomination they are. It doesn't make any difference to me. The difference is, is that we're going to have added unwanted traffic in our neighborhood on this narrow street. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else who would like to address the commission tonight? Yes, sir.
My name is Greg Smith. I live at three oh eight Kaladium. I'm your neighbor right behind you. When the petition came around to be signed, not everybody signed it. I was one who didn't. We have schools over here. City Hall is behind me. I hear sirens and stuff all the time. We're not in a residential section as much anymore as we used to be. I've lived in Castle Hills since nineteen fifty-two, so I've seen a lot of changes. This used to be where I could play and have my fort back here before they built this church. When you have a group of people that are wanting to spread the word of the Lord and come to a place and want to, want to do that, and we're asking what denomination they are, what language do they speak and this sort of thing. I think we're all trying to get to the same place. We just maybe do it a little bit different. And I don't have any objection to having a church down here. Yeah, I hate losing the tax money also. Mr. Howard built a beautiful place here and he's got an albatross in the middle of the neighborhood. Ms. Howard has tried to do many things with it and the council's turned her down all the time. I think this is probably one of the best uses for this property that we can find at this time. And maybe they will end up selling it to, to somebody and, and who has an even better idea. But I am not against this proposition.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Then we will close the public hearing. It's now seven thirty-eight PM and we're back into session of the zoning commission. I would make note for the record that the city has received a number of written responses to this application, which are on file with the city, including the, the references that were made in the, the public hearing tonight from those within the two hundred feet of the, the property in question. All right, so we're back in the open session, if you will. Are there other questions or comments from the zoning commission before we look for action on this? Mr. Gray?
I have a question. We were, I heard talk about additional infrastructure to accommodate traffic and safety and other types of needs. Who's responsible for that? Is the church a hundred percent responsible for any infrastructure? When you're saying like it has to become two-lane to come in or out as opposed to one lane? You're welcome to answer that if you know the.
If it's on their property, it would be the church's responsibility. The, the city's not going to pay for that.
And we, we, we're ready to address that. The entrance is a very beautiful entrance, so we would have to look at a way of making it wider to allow two-lanes traffic, as one of the gentlemen addressed. If there is an emergency, which, we have to be realistic, things happen. How can people exit safely while the first responders get in there to do their job? We do have a letter here from Chief Dover from the fire department saying that the property is ample size for his trucks to get in and out. If we can make the entrance maintain its beauty and make it wider, which we have some ideas of how to do it, we'd be more than happy to do that, which is something that we wanted to address to begin with. How do we make this, without losing the aesthetics of the property and make it easier to get in and out? Because we don't want to bottleneck, if you will. People want to go to church. They want to go home. We don't want to impede on the residents. We would like to make everything easy on everybody and not lose the, the, the neighbors, because we do want to become neighbors. It's not, we're going to come in here and put our will on everyone. The property egress is, is on us. We would more than likely do that regardless. I think that's one of the things we were looking at. It's wide enough for two cars to go through easily. Once you get the width of a fire truck, it changes everything, so we would make that entrance wider. We have to look at the oak trees, as y'all mentioned, without destroying the, the trees. How do we make it wider? And these are things that we have to address that we are willing to take care of. As far as, I'm trying to think some of the questions that were asked, how do I answer them? I'm a citizen of the United States of America. I came from a communist country. Yes, the border patrol can come into my church. No one in our church is here to do something bad. We want to worship in a peaceful way. I think everyone has the right of doing that. At the same time, we want to make as, as easy of transition as possible. The, the building is beautiful. The, I don't know how many people have been able to go in there. Beautiful murals on every wall. It's, it's a place that deserves a little more TLC and use. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Yeah, Mr. Gray, did you have any other questions?
Well, yeah, I wanted to ask, are there any provisions that would be in place? So if you're going to do something like this to widen ingress and egress, would that be done before the church starts up operations? Or how do we hold them to that?
That, yes, we're not going to go in there and use the building as it is now. There's a lot of things that need to be done. The fire extinguishing system, the fire suppression system needs to be done first. While that's being done, the parking lot needs to be done. There's several things that need to be done simultaneously before we can step foot in there as a church. So we would have to make this a usable, safe place of worship.
And, and let me also ask Mr. Brennan if you would mind weighing in on Mr. Gray's questions while regarding what compliance would need to be addressed.
Yes, sir. The, if this was approved for zoning purposes, they're still going to need to go to the architectural review board to, you know, develop exact plans and so forth. But you all can make as a condition of the SUP if you elect to grant an SUP that, you know, sufficient or adequate ingress and egress is provided or constructed on the property. And, and one of the beauties of an SUP is you can make up specific requirements for the use of the property that are not otherwise in the zoning code section for this particular zoning district. So if, if larger or greater ingress and egress pathways are, are important for this project, then you certainly can include that in the SUP.
Thank you, sir.
And does that, would that also include things like if the congregation grows and they decide they need to have a place for children, for daycare? And you said you're not planning on that currently.
No, we have classrooms for different age ranges.
Like for Sunday, you mean for Sunday services? Not for like, like Mother's Night Out or, you know, things like that?
Yes, sir. In other words, if you want to restrict the use to church purposes only, but not for daycares or nurseries or schools, you can do that in the SUP.
Thank you.
What about the addition of another building? I mean, as they grow?
You can do that too.
Mr. Brennan, I have a question. You said that you can, this, this board could put conditions on the SUP, but who monitors their compliance with that?
The, the city staff is obligated to monitor that and, and assure compliance with the terms of the SUP. You know, it's always a problem in long term because five years from now, somebody may not remember that that was a requirement, but that is a staff obligation.
And if there's a violation, does it come back to zoning? Does it, who does it go to?
Well, if there's a violation of the SUP rules, it's an enforcement action. And, you know, ultimately it could result in the revocation of the SUP.
Mr. Brennan, would you clarify one thing for me regarding the action we take tonight as a recommendation to the council? Because of the number of respondents within the two hundred feet who have expressed opposition to this, whatever recommendation that the zoning commission takes would require a four-fifths vote of the council to overturn, is that correct?
I, I don't think that's right, Mr. Chairman. The, if you all had a negative recommendation to the city council, then they would have to have the higher vote at the city council level. But the, the parts of the law that require a larger vote from the, really apply to plats or replats and not to zoning actions.
Well, I, I guess what I want to make sure I understand is if the commission deems to recommend approval of this SUP with certain provisions applied to it, that that is actually what would go to council for action versus a recommendation that may or may not be brought forward, if you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, well, whatever recommendation y'all make to grant or deny, say you make a recommendation to grant the SUP with conditions A, B, and C, that's what goes to the city council for their consideration.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure that I understand that. All right, are there other questions or, or comments? Or Mr. Gray, did you?
I have one other question I was going to ask you. There's this property, this vacant undeveloped property right next to nineteen nineteen Northwest Loop four-ten, right on the backside of the berm, as you're calling it, between that berm and four-ten. Have y'all looked at that property for future at all or is that, because there's nothing there? And I heard one suggestion, maybe they'd come in from the other way. That's, that would be a separate transaction.
Yeah, at this point, no.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? I, I have a, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Ventress.
I've got kind of a two-part one for our, our legal counsel. Mr. McGuire made an interesting point about the fact that if it satisfies all those terms, the church is basically allowed in the residential area, that, that would make it appear that the law doesn't allow for any say-so by any of the neighbors, no matter how close they are. Could you address what rights they have to object?
I, I think with due respect to Mr. McGuire, I think that's a little bit of an overstatement. The fact that there is an SUP process is legal and it implies that there is discretion in the city's power to either approve or deny this particular use. I think what the law is generally that you can't discriminate in any way against the church any differently than you would any other prospective user of the property, whether it's a school or anything else that's an authorized use. So the federal law and the state law both say you can't discriminate against churches any diff, but you still can hold them to the same standards that you do any other potential user of the property. So they don't have a special status any different than any other prospective user of the property. It's just that you can't discriminate against them because you don't like churches or something.
Okay, that, that, that does help. My second part of my question was, part C, the five C under the rules here about what they, they must satisfy, the predominant use of properties with the front yard of the lot on the street is other than single-family residential. It's a poorly worded sentence at best. I think what they're trying to say, and I want to see if I'm correct here, is that, that the predominant use is not residential around this. Am I, you want, would you like me to repeat that?
I, I think that's what the, the code is trying to get to or get at.
Okay, I was just wondering, we, we interpreted that the same.
Yes.
That, that's all.
Actually, a couple of things if I could. Where does the congregation currently meet?
Off of Vance Jackson, in a, oh gosh. Four-ten and Vance Jackson, I don't know the exact address, but it's in a. But it's in a, in an industrial zone, if you will.
And is it surrounded primarily by commercial or non-residential property?
Yes.
Okay. Sir, do you, can you appreciate, I don't, that may not be the right way. Can you understand the concerns that the residential neighbors here are expressing about having a non-residential introduction into this area? And if, and would you care to address that for them?
I think I, I'm trying to be very, very open-minded, and I can see where they want to keep everything, forgive me if I use any wrong words, in a quaint neighborhood. And my understanding is they don't want to have a bunch of crazy people going in there at once and ruining the solitude and the quietness of the neighborhood. I know the building itself is extremely soundproof. We did have a sound company go out there and check the decibels with instruments inside the building on what the decibels were outside, and the only thing they heard was 410 traffic. There's no difference on whatever you did inside the building on noise leaving the building. I can foresee Sunday mornings at nine o'clock, let's say hypothetically, 50 cars coming into the neighborhood. They're going to come in almost at the same time. There will be a little bit of traffic for a short amount of time. There's not going to be people coming in and out nonstop like a restaurant or something of that nature. I understand that they want to keep everything the same. We're not wanting to change anything. We just want to have a place that is quiet. The ambiance of that area is very pleasant, and we don't want to do anything to ruin that. And I don't know if they're more concerned about traffic, or they're more concerned on the type of people that are going in, or I'd love to be able to pinpoint what the major concerns are. I think the one question that was addressed as far as the Fire Department going in there, I myself am not a fire person, but we have a letter from the Fire, the chief of the Fire Department here in Castle Hill saying that there is ample space. We do want to address the egress and ingress. There's certain things that I hope we can come to terms with. If we get everybody to put their cards on the table and say, hey, this is what we asked for, can y'all meet that? We're very flexible. We want to be part of a family, as I mentioned. We don't want to be the sore thumb in the hand. What it takes to make everybody happy, other than, we can't have a single family in there. We don't, that's not, we want a family, but of a different type of family. I just can't see, or wrap my mind around, other than the number of vehicles coming in and out, where the problem's going to be. And that's hard to, unless we helicopter people in, but I think the airport would frown on that.
Could you tell me why you chose this location?
The beauty of it. It was, it was on a for-sale ad that we ran into, the pastor ran into, and it sounds kind of quirky, but it was kind of love at first sight. The building is immaculate. It's beautiful. It's got a great location. It's very close to where our congregation is meeting now, so we're not having to move people 10, 15, 20 miles away. So it's essentially located on where we're going now. This part of the city is very centralized. So if you're coming in from the airport for whatever reason, you're 10 minutes away. If you're going to be having to function at any other area, being centrally located means you're 10 minutes away from anything. We don't have everybody living in this neighborhood, but everybody can get to it relatively easily. The ease of access is a major concern. And I think that some of those questions may have to be answered by the pastor as far as what caught his eye so much, but it is just very, very appealing. The building is beautiful. The location is wonderful. The structure is very sound. It's a building that, you know, I don't think that a tornado could tear it down. Dee Howard did a wonderful job on that building. It's something that was very, very sound. It's safe, and I think we could have a very good service there.
All right. Ms. Baker?
This may be a question more for our city secretary. Do we have a percentage on how many people have signed voicing an objection to granting this SUP? Out of the 20-yard radius, 200 yards, sorry.
Commission member Baker, Ms. Phelan, interim city manager, has that percentage. I don't know if she discussed it with city attorney.
No, ma'am.
But I don't, I do know that there was a high percentage, but I don't know the exact number.
May we take a recess for a moment, so I can share an email with Mr. Brennan? I don't know if this is factually correct or not, share that information. We may be able to address this, because I think that will pertain to moving this forward. So it's 7:55 now. We'll take, we'll take just like a five-minute recess. Thank you.
I'd like to add, this building was originally a church.
We're in recess. Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, that's no problem.
I know. She got sick.
She sent me two emails, which is why I was trying to answer the first question, is I don't want to get into the past, as I think is a misunderstanding of the last thing, but if this is a recommendation, she had sent me an email saying 20% of the residents within the 200-foot radius had signed a petition against this, that that would trigger, it would trigger...
Apologize for the interruption there. As you know, we're citizens here, and none of us are experts on, well, I'll speak for myself, I'm not an expert on anything, but as citizens, sometimes you just need to make sure that we're proceeding legally in the proper way. And I wanted to make sure that information that had been provided to us by the city secretary was correct, a correct interpretation of the law, and I asked Mr. Brennan to address that. And Mr. Brennan, for the benefit of those who are here, so that they're aware of our discussion, would you mind articulating what we talked about in that question there?
Yeah. The chairman asked the question of whether there would be a, an enhanced or higher vote requirement of the zoning commission if a certain percentage of protest or negative comments was received by the city from 200 feet within the neighborhood. And my response to that is that that higher percentage of vote of the commission does not apply irregardless of how many negative or positive petitions are received for or against this project. There is a requirement in a plating law that says that if a certain percentage of adjacent property units within 200 feet protest or submit a negative comment on a plating change, then there is a higher vote of the commission at that time to approve it. But that same rule does not apply to zoning changes.
Thank you, sir. And I think what the confusion was, at least to me, is when the information was originally conveyed to me by the city secretary, I believe that the law that was cited actually referenced the plating issue, not this issue. So I just wanted to make sure that we were proceeding according to what the law expects us to do and how that's managed, and how this would move forward, then when it goes to the council with whatever recommendation we make. So I apologize for any interruption there, but that clarity I thought was important to our work here. With that said, let me ask the commission members if there are any other questions of the applicant before we entertain a motion. Okay, I hear nothing else, so the floor is open to a motion. Would anyone care to make a motion on this item?
Can I just clarify before we do that? Our charter here is to make a recommendation to city council on whether we think they should approve or not approve a SUP.
That is correct, sir. We would make a recommendation either for or against an SUP.
And that recommendation may include specific requirements or contingencies like we've talked about.
I would make a motion that we recommend to city council that we do not approve an SUP for this particular situation.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion to recommend non-approval of an SUP made by Mr. Gray and seconded by Ms. Baker. Is there discussion on this item? Mr. Fentress?
I have one caution here, and that is that the city council, of course, is autonomous when it comes to making the decision on this, and by denying it and putting it, you lay it in their lap, and you don't create any restrictions to the SUP. So in other words, if they were legally bound later to approve this, you've given up any opportunity at this point to put restrictions on that SUP. Am I correct?
Well, you could say that, but if, you know, if it's going to be disapproved, I don't know how you would say, we disapprove it, but by the way, there should be conditions A, B, and C.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I don't think you could do that. I don't think you should do that.
So what you're saying is we cannot, I mean, may I ask a question?
Of course.
That this board could not recommend declining the SUP application, but if the council decided to consider and approve it, we couldn't place conditions or suggest parameters?
You know, I guess the truth of the matter is, y'all can really make whatever recommendation you want. Maybe I was overstating that. If you want to recommend, recommend a disapproval, you probably could say, but however, if you don't, if you decide to approve it, you should have, you ought to do this, this, or this. I think you probably could do that.
I'd like to...
Cut, I'm sorry, Mr. Brennan.
Well, we've looked at this, we looked at this property once before with the daycare center. Now, a lot of these same issues, a lot of issues were raised relative to this property. The biggest one was the traffic, because it was going to be the school, basically, and it was going to be more traffic occurring at the same time with the other school. Here, I don't see that problem, because we're looking on at Sunday and Friday night and Thursday nights. So I would like, given that, if we, if we go forward with this, I'd like to see some restrictions, that there won't be any kind of day school re, excuse me. And I know they said that they're not planning on doing that, but I think we need to have those constraints. Another recurring issue is the drainage situation. I don't see that being a problem here, because they don't plan to do any more landscaping or anything that I can see, other than the grasscrete. But that could come into play if they decide to, they want to do another building because the congregation's gotten larger. So given those considerations, in my opinion, I don't see any justification, also, you know, obviously, you know, we don't want to lose the property taxes, but that's neither here nor there. So given those considerations, I don't see any, in my opinion, I don't see any technical, ethical, or legal justification for denying this SUP.
Thank you, Mr. Fentress. Mr. Brennan, if I could ask just one more question. We're tapping your wisdom tonight a great deal, so thank you for being here. If the commission were to act on this motion and recommend a council non-approval, could council, because it is a recommendation, council can supersede that? Would council have the authority then to approve an SUP with certain restrictions in it?
Yes, sir, exactly.
Okay. The reason I ask that, with all due respect, is I don't think we should try to have it both ways here, to say, we don't want this, we want, we want this commission to vote against it, but if it goes to council, we want to have our way and say, no, you can't do this. So I think we should, you know, either, we should have a straight-up or straight-down, is my personal opinion, and make our recommendation, our best recommendation, to council. That said, I would, I'll say my piece on this, too. I would like to see the property stay on the tax rolls. I think that would be a wonderful thing. I would also like to see people have the right to do with their property what they choose to. And I don't believe that we have heard anything tonight that would, in my mind, I don't see the disruption of the neighborhood that might be suggested here, with all due respect to those people who have responded to this. So I would be inclined to support recommending an SUP, and it still puts the final authority, as it should, with the city council on this. Other comments before we take a vote?
Yes, sir. I do think we have grounds to deny the SUP, because within the regulations under 50-61c, it says the predominant use of the properties with the front yard of the lot on the street is other than single-family residential. Even though we have City Hall, we have a school, and we have a Fire Department, everything else is a residence. And we are creating further deterioration of our neighborhoods. We are spot zoning, in essence, through SUPs. And we have had discussions with this board many, many times about how we should not be using SUPs to do this, and to allow the encroachment of non-residential uses into residential properties. So that... So that's why I object to it, other than that most of the citizens that are going to be the most affected by it object to it. And I think that it's compounded when you add in the other churches and other activities that go on on Sunday. I've driven up and down the streets near this proposed application for Lemonwood, and they're parking all over the place, and there is a lot of traffic. And the neighbors, I don't think they appreciate it. I wouldn't, and I don't feel it's appropriate for me to impose that on any of my other neighbors.
Thank you. I don't disagree with what you're saying about spot zoning and SUPs. And as you know, from the very beginning, I have always objected to that. I believe that we should be consistent with our zoning. That said, I would also comment that this applicant is addressing the parking problem. What I believe I heard you say is that we are going to apply to them a problem that is caused by the other churches here, not one that they're responsible for. Yes, there are other, there are cars parked on the streets. I don't dispute that. I've driven up and down here, too. It is a problem. The condition of the roads is a problem. The drainage is a problem. There are lots of problems that need to be addressed that we don't have the authority to take on here tonight. But I want to be careful that if we're going down this road, that at least I make it clear my position on this, is I can't hold this applicant responsible for what others have done before them. If those churches have those parking issues, I don't believe that is something that we should hold against the applicant, just as if I can't hold against one homeowner what the next homeowner does.
I would also say that's enforceable, too, because it says a minimum parking for church area. And I know the church you're referring to, they park on the streets, but, so that's, they're in violation, and that should be something that the city should enforce. And I don't think that should fall on these folks.
All right. Are there any other comments? We have a motion and a second on the table. Any other comments? All right. Hearing none, we'll take a vote. To restate Mr. Gray's motion that we recommend to city council that a special use permit for 210 Lemonwood Drive and 212 Lemonwood Drive not be approved, that would be our recommendation. Is that correct, Mr. Gray? That was Mr. Gray's motion and Ms. Baker's second. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your hand. We have Mr. Fentress, Ms. Baker, Mr. Gray. All opposed? Is Brennan and Flynn. All right. With that, the recommendation will be made to the city council that they not approve the special use permit. This is a recommendation. It will be up to the city council to make a final determination on that. It's my belief, Ms. Gonzalez, am I correct, that this will be on the agenda for the city council meeting that would take place next Tuesday at 6:30 PM here in council chambers? Thank you all very much for being here tonight. It's 8:13 PM, and we are adjourned.